Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our umbrella, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
Mrs. Dobus.
Here.
Mr. McGregor.
Here.
Mr. Modrak.
Here.
Mr. Nagel.
Here.
Mrs. Rule.
Here.
Mr. Scialzo.
Here.
Mr. Spicuzzo.
Present.
Mrs. Turner.
Here.
Nine members present.
Thank you. Tonight, this evening, we would like to take a moment to recognize a valuable member of our administrative team who will be retiring on March 1st. Bill Keith began working in the Bethel Park School District's Facilities Department 22 years ago and has devoted almost a quarter of a century to making sure that our schools were in the best possible condition. During his tenure at Bethel Park, Mr. Keith worked primarily at the high school, serving as its head custodian for 14 years, before being named to the district's Director of Facilities and Services four years ago. Hiring Mr. Keith as our facilities director when the district decided to no longer contract out its facilities management was an important decision. By the time he was promoted to lead this department, his work ethic and dedication were known to everyone in the district. Mr. Keith, you were the right man for the job. Your leadership style helped to foster better working relationships among your employees and to create a cohesive team atmosphere. Therefore, the group worked together to accomplish more. Under your leadership, our schools and facilities are clean, welcoming, and safe environments for learning, for showcasing our students' talents, and for hosting athletic competitions. Safety was your number-one priority, and you worked tirelessly to ensure that our facilities were up-to-date, whether it involved stringent cleaning during cold and flu seasons or making sure that our fire alarm systems were updated and working. We always knew that whatever the situation, from power outages to clearing snow from our parking lots to water main breaks, you would be the first person on the scene, working to make sure everything would get back to normal as quickly as possible. We thank you for your years of service to the district, and we wish you well as you begin this next chapter of your life. It's our understanding that you and your wife are looking forward to traveling more, and it's our hope that you have many years of exciting adventures and good memories together. At this time, it is my honor and pleasure to present you with a small token of the district's appreciation for your years of service and leadership. This Service to Education Award reads, "By word and deed, your leadership and work ethic have kept our district facilities in top condition and served as an example to all. Thank you for your dedication to the Bethel Park School District." And I invite you to come up at this time so I can present this to you, and will you all please join me in a well-deserved round of applause?
Thank you all for taking your time. Sure, I would like to thank the school board for honoring you tonight. I would also like to thank the public for their support throughout this. I'd be honored also in public. I'd like to thank the administration, especially central administration. I would like to thank the teachers, the principals, the students especially, and the kitchen workers, and the studio staff, and the waiting staff. I'd like to thank John Branca for his support along the Dr. Road. They've been great. We've been a great team along with Leonard, Luzzy. And I'd like to thank, who's been the leadership of our team, is Dr. Pascarella. And he's been a great, he's been a teacher, just a wonderful guy, our staff. And I have to say, this is in the 360 degree old district, I think he showed flying leadership, and we're going to appreciate him, and I'm sure we're going to miss him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keith. Okay, let's move forward then with the intent to adopt the agenda for business items. I would like to also tell you that we will be next week having our Board Docs training, and so hopefully the agenda for next month will be in a different format, and you'll be able to access it easily if we learn it fast enough. So we'll see how that goes. But just to keep you updated, you can watch for that in the future. So can I have a motion to adopt the agenda items?
So.
It's been moved by Mr. Nagel and seconded by Mrs. Rule. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Also, I'd like a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on January 28th and the business meeting on February 18th.
Sir.
It's been moved by Ms. Turner and seconded by Mr. McGregor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Approve 9-0. I'd like to also announce executive session on February 5th, 2020, February 11th, 2020, February 14th, 2020, February 17th, 2020, February 18th, 2020, and February 25th, 2020, for personal, other legal matters and to receive information. At this time, we will also, we will now have the student government report.
So last week was Wish Week for SGA, so that means we had shoeboxes in all the rotundas with slips of paper for students to make wishes. And then this week is a spirit week at the high school, so three things are going to be going on. First of all, SGA members are going to be granting the wishes that people made in the rotundas. We have a spreadsheet with everyone signing up for wishes. I think it's close to 100 wishes that we're going to be granting to benefit the student body. Then we're also having spirit days. Today was Pittsburgh Day, tomorrow's going to be Class Color Day, Jersey Day, and Black and Orange Day on Friday. And then lastly, we're doing Counting for Coins tomorrow, which is where we send out bags to all of the homerooms for teachers to collect money from students, coins, bills, whatever. And then those funds are going to go to the Australian Wildlife Conservancy for wildfire relief there. Thanks.
Thank you. PTA, PTO report? Thank you for sending it ahead of time also. Appreciate it.
Hi, my name's Melissa Frank. I'm the co-president at George Washington. It's been a busy winter at George Washington. On February 7th, we hosted our very first Neon Party, which was produced by Emerald Owl Productions, a North Carolina-based entertainment company. Students and parents experienced a professional laser light and glow party experience, complete with dance competitions, music, and games. The response from the Neon Party was overwhelmingly positive, and we plan to invite Emerald Owl Productions back again for the 2020-2021 school year. Penny Pigs, a new coin drive slash grade level competition, was met with great enthusiasm by the students, and in total, the PTO raised approximately $1,500 to be used towards field trips and assemblies. Washington Day was on February 21st and was celebrated with a bookmarked design competition for all grade levels. Students are now currently raising money for the American Heart Association through Jump Rope for Heart, and the school event will take place on February 27th with students doing several related physical activities and special games in their gym class. Our Sarah Spring fundraiser currently wrapped up and was very successful. On February 20th, Assembly Line's Chinese Acrobat troupe performed in assembly for all of the students. And finally, the PTO will host an art and science fair and ice cream social on March 6th.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all that you do. Solicitor report?
Thank you, Ms. Dobus. I don't have anything to share during the public session, but you know, in conjunction with the announcement of executive sessions, there are several items that I'm discussing with the board in executive session.
Committee reports at this time. First of all, Ms. Dobus, would you like to talk about Wellness Week since we're on the...
Absolutely. This is, this is, this is Bethel Park Wellness Week, and we got underway on Sunday with a kickoff. We had some kids from Kids of Steel do a lap around the, the community center track to kick it off, and our keynote speaker that night was Judge Arnony and Brad Kilmeier to talk a little bit about their program, Project Lead, and how it impacts students to make positive choices in the future and how that will impact our community as a whole. Monday was Mental Health Night, and we were able to listen to a, a parent and teacher from another school district who, she's an emotional support teacher, and she thought she really knew everything that she needed to know about how to help kids that were struggling with anxiety and depression and mental health issues. And then her daughter had a breakdown around the time that she was in seventh grade and realized that, quite frankly, some of the things that she thought that she was, had learned in college and all of those kind of things that she would tell other parents as she was going through the process was different when it was your child and she, and what she learned through that. And we were blessed to have her daughter there as well, who is now a freshman at California University of Pennsylvania, who gave her mom the permission to tell the story, and the impact there was pretty powerful, and some of the people in the audience were well-moved. In fact, one of our families in Bethel Park that unfortunately lost a daughter to her struggle with depression is looking at starting a nonprofit and wants to engage with the students and the school district in hopes of doing something powerful for all of our kids. And tonight is nutrition, and Joe Consolmango and his group from Metz Culinary Services are the keynote speakers. They're doing some, as we're speaking right now, doing some work there and showing some cooking classes kind of thing. And then we have a variety of different tables that are set up for people to walk through and gain information, from mental health to eating well to, people had some screenings with chiropractors and just a variety of different informational services that are available, and tables are set up each night. Tomorrow is actually our Physical Health Day, and it's, we have 19 different vendors that are going to be there with tables to have information shared, and our keynote speaker is a gentleman that works with concussion management and talking a little bit about the ramifications of brain health and how that affects our wellness and well-being and how to protect yourselves for brain health. On Thursday, we have Representative Natalie Mahalik is coming and talking about drug identification, excuse me, and some of the push at the state level on what we're doing about the opioid epidemic, as well as the use of different types of drugs in our society, and how parents, community members, children, we can help one another to combat that. And then we're rounding out the week on Friday with the keynote speaker is a gentleman that is going to speak about wellness and mindfulness and stress reduction. And Will Davies is, Dr. Will Davies is his name, and he did a phenomenal job. We had him speak to some of our staff members last year, but just talking about how you can gain, take a moment and regain yourself with all of the stress that we're under on a regular basis, no matter if you're a child or an adolescent or an adult or a senior citizen, how that stress can really dictate your health and well-being on a variety of different levels. And as I said, each night, there's tables set up and dissemination of information, and really, the Wellness Summit was really set up primarily just to provide information to all community members. It's not a school district piece. That's why it's, it's a partnership with the municipality. It is to provide information for all community members in Bethel Park.
Thank you. And isn't that in conjunction with the try it week also?
It is, yes.
So the rec department is inviting the community members to come up and try different activities.
Absolutely. In the Chronicles, you can actually look at their list of different classes that they have offered. I actually stuck my head on, head in on one called HIIT or something like that, and it was real, sprinting with cardiovascular, real quick, get your heartbeat up, and then calm down, and then get your heartbeat back up and calm down. Looked like a lot of fun.
Sounds like a lot of work.
As an observer, it looked like a lot of fun. So I recommend the next step is to go ahead out there and try it. So please, you know, stop in at the community center, try a class or two, and gain some information through the Wellness Summit.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that is in conjunction, the school district had a liaison meeting with the municipality last week, and it was a great conversation that we had. We talked about a lot of interests that are joint that we can maybe move forward on in the future, and we're very excited about establishing this relationship with the municipality. And they've got, in addition to talking about the Wellness Summit, they also have this Bethel Greenway Update, which is the Allegheny Land Trust, which we are working in conjunction with the Allegheny Land Trust to create this green center down off of 88 below, near Connor Road, I guess it is. And so it's going to be forever a green space that people can enjoy. And the kickoff is March 11th up at Cole Springs, and I believe you can sign up to be part of that kickoff at that time. Is there anything else that I needed to mention that those of you who were at the meeting with me? All right, other committee meeting reports? Go ahead.
As President of Steel Center Board, I will be presenting the state of career technical education next Tuesday. There has been a large emphasis, as you know, career technical education and the new direction that it will be taking, and Steel Center is very much on the cutting edge, looking at possibly changing the school on the ground and adding other programs, and two of them will be started this, this fall. And there are many things that will be spilling over into our high schools because career technical education is going to be blended in with other academics in a different, new way that we haven't seen before. So it's, it's an exciting time for that particular type of education. Also, Shasta, and as President of that organization, I'd like to invite anyone to come to the South Park High School next Tuesday at 5:00. We will have, all of the schools will be participating, in which their students will be presenting projects that they've all been working on, and there are really some model impressive projects that they, they show. There are 86 students from all of our schools participating, and Bethel will be there. So if any of you can make it, come at 5:00. They have summer wear dresses, and also to see what amazing things that these high school students can do. The last thing is, I would like to say that the Allegheny Intermediate Unit, we hired an executive director last night, and it's Dr. Shearer from North Allegheny, comes with vast experience. He'll be overseeing 42 schools, and he, his school district had two high schools, three middle schools, and seven elementary schools. He also works for the city of Pittsburgh, so he has been in a lot of his schools, brings extensive background, and I see that some of the offerings through the Allegheny Intermediate Unit that will be available to all schools are certainly going to change and certainly come into a new era. So it's exciting times for all these different organizations in which we are a part. And the last thing I'd like to say, Daryl, for Pathfinder, we approved last night 15 lap bus for the students here at Pathfinder. So they'll be getting them. I think that's a nice addition.
Actually, Barry was taking that over now.
Yeah. Was there a meeting last night?
This was for the other...
Oh, yeah, you, oh, okay. Because I was just on a meeting on Wednesday.
They're in charge of the curriculum with our Pathfinder, and they are in charge of all the expenses or approvals for anything to do with education. So that's why I did it.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, any other committee meetings?
So there, there was a meeting last week with Pathfinder, and you know, our participation on theirs from a facilities and finance standpoint, not a lot of major things going on outside of, you know, some water testing and some projects that were identified to be completed this summer. But it was my first time attending the meeting, and you know, I look at the minutes. There's a total of 83 students that attend. Does anybody here know how many, I don't want to know the names, but how many does Bethel Park send to Pathfinders? What's their share of that 83?
We have six, and one of the five program at Pathfinder.
We have six?
Six plus one, there's another program at Pathfinder called five.
So seven total? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll take public comments on agenda items only. Seeing none, we'll move to business items. Mr. Scialzo, please take Curriculum Committee, please.
Okay, under Curriculum Committee, we have three items. One, 2019-2020 change in school calendar. Number two, Community College of Allegheny County Memorandum of Agreement for Dual Enrollment. And three, professional development. Would anyone like any of these withheld? Then I move, I move to approve all three items under Curriculum Committee.
Second.
Mr. Scialzo moved, and Mr. Modrak seconded all three items under Curriculum Committee. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 9-0.
We also have discussion only for HAWK time at this point.
Ms. Rule, do you have a presentation for us?
Sure. After last week's meeting, the conversation was about to develop a committee to look at HAWK time and how HAWK time is being implemented. And in our school district, there's a couple different ways in which a committee can be formed, and I asked Mrs. Dobus for a little bit more direction, and she thought it would be good if we talked about it in this format. So currently, we do have a HAWK time committee that is running, that had been running, that there were, there are 16 members on it, a principal, central administration, which is Mrs. Wells predominantly sat on that committee, and there was representation from each of the elementary schools. They met numerous times to talk about exactly the plan and the pathway for the use of the HAWK time on a daily basis. And in that, the members were chosen in, as far as the guidance is on the collective bargaining unit from the, with the teachers. We can, and this is when we talk about the committee, we can reactivate this group of people and ask them to evaluate HAWK time and, and do the work and not repost and use the, the teachers that have already had that experience of working with some of the things going around the use of HAWK time. However, after I had, we had left the meeting last week, I got an email from a parent expressing interest to participate in HAWK time, the HAWK time committee. In Bethel Park, there is a district committee that is in the collective bargaining unit agreement that basically says that a parent can't be a part of a teacher committee or a curriculum committee, but a parent could be a part of a district committee. So therefore, I asked Mrs. Dobus, did we want to do a district, a district committee in which we would, we would solicit volunteers from the stakeholders in the parent rankings as well as the teacher rankings and open a new committee? And then the third is because of the, when Mrs. Dobus had mentioned a program evaluation, there's a variety of different components that go into a true program evaluation, and often those are done to get a third party or an unbiased approach toward the program in and of itself. So the third option would be something like the Collaborative for Assessment and Evaluation Capacity out of the University of Pittsburgh, that I have some experience in working with a few years ago or last year, that would probably do the evaluation for us with our guidance and our scope, but it would cost probably a couple thousand dollars. When I was, when I was doing my graduate work there, that was kind of their, that cost around that. So I wanted, before we moved forward, I wanted to make sure that the board had those, that background information on the committee and how you would like us to move forward. The other piece of this is, I know that Dr. Pascarella, when he arrived, and Mrs. Wells shortly after that instituted HAWK time and the use of HAWK time, but I wanted the board and the community to be aware that that is not a new approach. Hawk time, the name Hawk time was a new approach, but the response to intervention or their multi-tiered student support system is something that was driven, and I shared with you documents on Chapter 14 of the school code, as well as Chapter 16 of the school code, and why those, those structured times of intervention and extension are needed to be able to meet certain requirements that we are given through the Pennsylvania Department of Ed. We've called ours Hawk time. Many school districts call it SOAR, call it, you know, you know, just different names, but that, that structured time of intervention is not an uncommon phenomenon in our school systems these days. Bethel Park called it Hawk time, but that's, just to give a little bit of foundation. In fact, Mrs. Sutton and I were kind of giggling about it, not giggling, but we were reminiscing because we had actually started about 2009, I believe, is when we pulled information that we had concerning response to intervention. And at the time, if anybody was around, it was called IST Plus, and we, there was an incorporation of how we were using the interventions and working with that. So you know, it's, it's a process, we, you know, and we want to, we want to get the information that the board is requesting. I just want to make sure that I'm getting it from the right people and, and from your guidance how to do it the best way.
Okay, I have a couple questions. So the committee that is already in existence, when was the last time they met?
They met in the fall.
They presented to the staff at the beginning of the...
Yeah, so it was...
They presented what at the beginning?
They presented to the staff at the beginning of the year. So they, they got together and presented in August, I believe, to the full staff.
And what was it that they actually presented to the staff?
So they presented to the staff any updates, any changes, anything that they would, you know, they met and they agreed to change. For instance, they wanted to shorten some of the interval times of how often they look at students, so that's something they agreed upon, and they short, I'm sorry, they, they wanted to lengthen the time that they had with groups of students to a nine-week period. They wanted to pilot the CBT and a few other schools to use as their assessments and to be able to monitor students. So Lincoln and Franklin, the third and fourth grader, are piloting those for the HAWK time decision-making assessment. They also decided that they wanted to look at what they're calling real-time standards so that they would focus on the standards that are being implemented in the classrooms at the current time. at the current time and working with the students, presenting that information in a different way rather than looking at something that was presented three weeks ago or six weeks ago, because that used to be the time period in which we would rotate groups, but because the group was longer. Um, so they determined for each group that these were the focus standards that we're going to look at it in nine weeks and that's been then predetermined, the committee predetermined that based on their scope and Z points. So everyone has a year in advance or in review of this is what we're going to be focusing on each nine weeks in the group. So, so information like that that they roll out to the staff on how the program's going to run.
So that seems to me to be different than an evaluation of the program. It seems to me that that's more how it changes year to year based on the continuation of it?
I think that's legitimate.
Okay. And then, um, is there anything to prevent a curriculum committee from, um, asking for community input? Because I know that the discipline committee is asking for community.
Um, it, it, they, there's nothing to prevent for asking for community input. There is that language to prevent the actual participation of the committee. So they, the parents could be, we could of course survey all stakeholders through the committee, but you wouldn't have a parent necessarily sitting at the table during all of the discussion and those kind of things if it's, if it's just a curriculum committee.
And I'm assuming that, um, all decisions would be in compliance with this RTI and the.
Absolutely. Yeah.
But, but there are other ways to fulfill those requirements than.
Absolutely.
Okay. So does anybody have an idea about, do you want to? First of all, I don't want to go with a third party. I don't know if anyone else wants to, but I think it's going to take too long.
I did have a few questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Like, uh, so the presentations and the findings they have been given over, I think you guys said this curriculum committee's been in place thirty years now?
Uh, no, it's, uh, probably two.
Do you have any documentation on the findings or like was their presentation a PowerPoint that you'd be able to share with us?
They presented, yeah, they have a PowerPoint that they share with the staff.
Okay.
Yeah, we can, we can, um, get them to, uh, share it with us. I think probably we both have it, just that we're.
Okay. The second question I have is on the district committee. Uh, that a lot of parent involved and I've always been big on trying to involve all stakeholders and soliciting information. But, uh, a couple of questions is how long would it take to go through that process and how the, the stakeholders.
Typically, uh, when we have had district level committees in the past, um, a, a, uh, announcement would go through on, um, the email blast or on the website or whatever saying that we're, um, having this committee. And it would also be announced similar to the way a curriculum committee is in-house that teachers can volunteer. Typically, those, that posting goes up, I think contractually it has to be up for five to seven days or something like that. I would have to verify the timing. And then, um, we, you know, close the posting. The, the, um, contract is very specific on how the teachers are chosen. Typically, what has happened in the past when I've participated in district committees is, um, the, it's similar, you know, we sit down, we talk about, you know, uh, we have two elementary parents that we, you know, we want to have elementary, want to have middle school or whatever when you're talking about the district or want to have one parent, make sure that we have one parent from every elementary school, however that is. And then those are the ones that are chosen. Unfortunately, um, the last couple of committees, like the Comprehensive Plan Committee, which we're going to need volunteers for again here shortly, um, we, you know, you have to continue to solicit volunteers because you don't necessarily get a lot. So, um, sometimes it's contacting, uh, particular elementary school PTO to say, you know, can somebody come sit on the committee?
So for a committee like this, how long would you be able to provide a broad estimate of how long it'd take to decide?
Well, if we got started, I, you know, the, the sooner that we could get started, I, I would like to. And, uh, Mrs. Dobus, uh, uh, last week's meeting had mentioned, you know, before the end of the school year, and I would think that that would be not, not a problem whatsoever. In fact, I would, I would recommend that we would have it well before then. Um, um, you know, that we could sit down, really do an evaluation, find out what's working, what's not, uh, what do we, you know, how do we want to improve upon what we're doing, those kind of things, um, within, you know, two or three meetings. Uh, maybe, maybe that's about it and then present to the board.
Okay. Well, my last question's on the third option, the third party. Uh, now would a third party solicit input from all stakeholders?
Typically, yeah, they, what, what happens is, um, you, you, you would meet with the researchers, um, and basically we would tell them what the scope of the study that we wanted them to do and what questions, what, what questions we wanted them to ask and who to ask them to. So often what they do is they survey and then they'll do interviews, um, do observations if we ask or whatever it happens to be and get the whole picture and then do a report alongside that.
Okay. Well, back to the second one then, uh, as far as the survey, uh, while, you know, with all stakeholders to get input, I'd love for them to be on the committee, is there a possibility of along with that, having a survey?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. The committee can kind of drive where they get their data from. So the committee can make that decision whether, quite frankly, whether it is the teacher-only committee or the one that has parents sitting at the table, uh, they can both drive where they get the information. And typically what happens if we do a survey similar to the discipline survey, um, the, the questions are created and then we run those by the superintendent and often the solicitor to make sure that we're not asking anything that's going to, uh, cause any problems or anybody any concern other than getting us the information that we're asking for.
My only question is, um, you mentioned that this committee presented to the staff in August. Is there no, like, you know, assigned or planned meetings between August and the end of the year? It seems to, to me that something as important as a curriculum committee would meet more often, especially when they're suggesting, you know, here are some things like CDT that we're going to roll out. Okay, let's, let's take a look at it after the first quarter and see where we go from here. Did you guys try to schedule any curriculum meetings with that?
I, I don't believe, I don't believe that, that there was a request from the committee that's currently standing to relook at those, that information. And what happens at the elementary school often is the, the principals are engaged, you know, and they, uh, we do what we call data days where we'll look at data and where the, the kids are progressing and those kind of things. Those go on in the elementary school, but it wouldn't have been a full committee, um, you know, a full committee meeting. And often right now, Mr. McGregor, and I'm sure you probably are experiencing it sometimes in Mount Lebanon too, but we have such a, a, um, issue with getting subs that it's, you know, to have a, a full committee meeting, um, sometimes it's difficult when you have, you know, um, in this particular case, sixteen teachers that would be out and nine of them don't have subs. And that's not an atypical, um, thing to happen. So we, we kind of try to do some of our meetings like that during our professional development days and such, so we're able to, um, do it around the, the necessity of having subs.
Okay.
I have, yeah, I have, I have a few questions. It, it kind of goes back to more of the, uh, I guess the original implementation. I'm just try, I'm trying to learn as much as I can about HAWK time. Uh, first question, uh, before the implementation, uh, did you pilot the program with a cohort of teachers to collect data so that you can compare it with what was currently in place?
There was no pilot.
It was just implemented?
It was, it was, yes.
So there, you didn't roll something out? Let's say if you have, you have five elementary buildings, two teachers per building, have a team, and when you have a team of teachers implementing something like that for a year or two, collect data on that and then compare it to what they were doing, just to kind of see, you know, progress?
That was, that was not done.
That was not done? Okay. Uh, next question. How much training did teachers receive before HAWK time pro, before the HAWK time program was implemented? I mean, like, number of in-service days and exactly of the, the number of in-service days? Like, how many hours approximately during those in-service days before implementation? Does anybody know that?
I don't remember any structured time that was given specifically to training in what would be called HAWK time. However, um, I do, we have had ongoing training on, um, specific interventions and we continue to do that with things like the dyslexia pilot, um, early intervention pilot and, and those kind of things. So it's, it's, uh, the, the training in and of itself on what we're going to do during HAWK time. Many of, you know, when, um, Dr. Stark was here, we had our reading specialists were trained on foundations, which is a structured intervention, um, um, program that was, the expectation was to use it on some of our, um, struggling readers. So there was some training that was done, that the skills were already developed. What was different was the structure of the time in which the interventions and the extensions was being done.
I'm just going to chime in for just one second. At the time Dr. Stark was here, I believe, and at the time she was in charge of the elementary school, we went to every single building and had meetings where they wanted us to have meetings that was rolled out by the principals too. We talked a little bit about how we were going to go about doing that. The union had some objections to that. We worked out an MOU with the union in regards to that. Some of their suggesteds were listed in there, like the number of the days of kindergarten we're going to be there. Any building that personally had questions and, and had some additional concerns, myself and Dr. Stark went to every single building, four schools and had faculty meetings. I remember being in most every single building myself, along with Dr. Stark, along with multiple times with any building that needed it. So some of the training wasn't just in a day and then we moved on. There was a lot of questions that were going to come up. So we frequently met, uh, prior to the start of school sometimes and some of their faculty meetings to answer specific questions and get feedback. At the close of that, there was some discussion at the end of that year about, you know, some things that could be changed and the thought that we should, you know, have a committee. And my, just to be very honest, my idea was HAWK time's not going to go away. It's part of response to intervention, which is an important program, but I think we should look at some feedback. We had that committee that was formed in conjunction with the union as it should have been. The committee met. One of their main suggestions, which I was really impressed with, was the idea we were, we were rolling this out often, working on something for three weeks and then implementing enrichment and remediation after that. Takes a lot of planning and preparation to try to do that in real time and that was something that teachers really wanted and wanted to step up. And, uh, so I was really impressed by that, that they were willing to do that, you know, devote some of their planning time and work together to make it real time. So I was very impressed by that suggestion out of the committee. So I think that that was very powerful. But I have to be honest to say that there was no unstructured time, there was no professional development, there was no explanation. I'm just going to have to agree to disagree. And at that given time, Dr. Rourke, I don't believe you were involved in, in the kindergarten through four programs.
You're correct.
Thank you.
I was, I was not.
So I was personally there at the meeting and we rolled those out and there was a lot of good questions and answers. And we, we did try that out and, and we worked and we gained feedback, both in the informal process at the elementary level and then a formal committee process as well.
I have another question. Uh, was there a packaged curriculum purchased to provide a consistent framework among all five elementary schools or any support materials of any kind for HAWK time? Uh, how do we know if all of our students are getting the same experiences across all of the elementary buildings where you don't have one teacher doing kind of their own thing on their own island? Uh, is, was there something purchased? Was there something put in place to have continuity among all five schools?
So a couple of comments on, are you directing?
I, I was, yeah.
Do you want to go first?
No.
Okay. Um, so a couple of comments I will say on that. When we were implementing and piloting the Wonders curriculum, as you might recall, one of the big cells to me on that was the variety of resources that were available, differentiating instruction in Wonders already there. Uh, and I was really, I really thought that was solid. So did many of our special education teachers as well as our enrichment and gifted teachers. So I thought that was powerful. In addition to that, we had a lot of resources that were already available at the elementary. Some, some buildings had foundations, some had different curriculum apps that were available on our one-to-one initiatives that we did use. Think the key component was that this was going to be flexible in nature and to be able to do what the teachers felt was best for those students at that given time. And sometimes that, that changed over time. So you wanted to have a, a variety of resources. I think the key component was if a staff member really felt that there was something that they needed and they needed additional supplemental material in addition to what we had, Wonders or Foundations or the others, we purchased those items for them.
I have another question. I asked last week about reading specialists, uh, teaching math and reduced time spent on science. The question is, how much science is taught through the process of reading versus hands-on and exploratory science? That's what I would like to know.
Say if you looked at the schedule, we, we could get a, a direct answer for you, but in general, if you looked at the, the exact schedule, I, I don't have that in front of me, the elementary school schedule, uh, to tell you precisely. I would say oftentimes when you're in a, in a class unlike in the upper grades where they switch and rotate, there's a lot of times where there's just some blended learning, some opportunities with large blocks of time when it's self-contained classroom, which almost all, maybe not quite all, but most all of our elementary schools are self-contained, meaning they teach their own reading, their own math, their own science and social studies. Sometimes I think they, they may adjust their days a little bit to spend a little bit more time on science or social studies or a little more on reading. They have the ability to do that. So I think that fluctuates a little bit, uh, day by day. Um, we can get you that information so that I don't misspeak to make sure that it is consistent. I know one thing that sometimes you'll see on schedules is how, when students arrive in the morning and what that home room time looks like. Sometimes you'll see different start times, not by much, by, by moments, you know? So that was something that we're really trying to find too, to get that block of time, so.
And then through the whole process, there was never a survey conducted with the staff to try to get feedback on, let's say, any difficulties they may be having? Is there ever a?
Yeah.
District-wide survey?
Well, actually, I know that the, um, I believe, if I recall correctly, that the union had a meeting in regards prior to that committee and some other things. And, um, Mr. Wells facilitated that and invited any elementary teachers who want to come. They listed a series of feedback that they had. We kind of tried to prioritize that so that we could focus those goals. His idea and working with me very well, I felt, was we're not going to eliminate HAWK time, but let's talk about ways that we can improve this. Let's look at some, you know, opportunities that are out there and then let's get a little committee to get, gathered to focus on that because we're not going to, Dr. P's not going to completely abandon it, but let's look at some priorities that you really think are focused. And one of the biggest ones, if I recall, Ms. Wells, if I'm right, was real time. They wanted this to be in real time, which I, just like I said, I was really impressed by that. I really thought, wow, what a great suggestion.
I have one more question. Uh, specials, specials such as music, gym, art, computers and the library used to be, used to be thirty minutes in the morning and thirty minutes in the afternoon? Again, this is information I, I've gathered, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, from, now they are back to back, uh, from what I'm gathering. Uh, is this the best approach for elementary students by not having a, a special to kind of break things up throughout the day? So they're, are they going long periods throughout the day without getting a break? That's, again, information that I was gathering, so.
I, I would say that, you know, there's two ways, in my opinion, there's two ways of looking at that. I mean, the idea of having multiple breaks, you lose a lot of time when you transition children from one special to another special, from here to there, there's a transition time that could be lost. One thing we were really looking at to kind of, to make this work be effective is a large block, block of time in and around ELA and mathematics, so we didn't have to split that time up. Often people would say if they had to sit there for that entire ELA block for like two hours or something like that, that's too long for a child. But if you've ever seen, most, if not all of our teachers teach, it's pretty impressive. They don't sit there like a college lecture. They're moving from centers, they're differentiating instruction, they're, they're really doing a nice job of moving kids around the room and getting them up and engaging them in different pieces of the lesson. So, uh, to be, to be truthful, there would be some that would feel that more breaks would be beneficial. There would be others that say having a nice solid block of time to make sure you don't stop and start mathematics, you know, or, or reading English Language Arts is, is, is a big component as well.
Promise, last question. Promise, last question.
Well, so the, the only thing, the only thing is that you, the questions you're asking are.
The questions you're asking are extending the scope of this to, to maybe, I mean, no, I'm not, I'm not, what I'm saying is that we might want to think about extending the scope of this committee based on your questions being on HAWK time, is what I'm saying.
I'm just trying to learn as much as possible. I have one, one last question, I promise, I won't take any more time. Again, back to, I guess, when it was first implemented, what, what data was used to support the implementation of HAWK time? Meaning, was, was this a proven program elsewhere? Where did it originate? Where'd it come from? Again, the framework of it, the data, the research to back it up? And was that data also shared with the staff? Like, this is the reason why we're looking at HAWK time, here's research that shows that this is a proven program. We've, we've seen that this has been successful across multiple districts or something like that.
So if you look at most, if you even Google response to intervention, you'll see as it was discussed, I think, earlier by our administration, that it's been around for quite some time. And, and most all school districts, if not all, most all, have some form of response to the intervention program. So I think that's the research behind it. I've said publicly that the way that I implemented HAWK time was a little bit of a modified response to intervention, and I think that was a positive from my own opinion, and that might be something in your survey you want to get feedback for. But what I mean by that is, if you think about response to intervention, and I'll try not to belabor this, but as you move up through the tiers, meaning tier one, everyone gets that, tier two, it gets more intensive, tier three, it gets very intensive. One of the biggest things I learned from experience and talking with others is when you do that, you constantly progress, monitor, and reassess what you do need to do in order to determine whether or not it works. Sometimes you spend all of your time testing and not enough time actually providing the interventions. You just test, 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 to see if they're making growth without having as much interventions. The other big piece of the modified version that I looked at is I don't want to only spend, I, I want to make sure that the students that need intensive intervention get that, that is true, but I also want to make sure the students that are on level and students are enriched, need enrichment on that skill, have the opportunity to get that as well, because oftentimes you're gonna miss many of the students in tier one if they're not in, in the talented and gifted program, you're, you're gonna miss that. So really looking at each skill. Sometimes a student might excel in one skill and need enrichment, and in another one they may need remediation. So those are the two main components that I'd say are modified, but overall, it's response to intervention, which has been around for quite some time.
That's all I have.
I, I would ask, and either, however the board goes on, okay, with the committee, I just want parent intervention, parent response, either by survey or however. Two things, I had a child that did response intervention when Dr. Stark was here. I would ask, as a parent and a board member, that we really look at what is considered block scheduling that didn't work at the high school level, which is my understanding of what we've kind of put the elementary into. I can't imagine my five-year-old sitting for an hour and a half in one subject. So I would ask that the committee as a whole use that evaluating part of that as the evaluation process, and look at what we were doing prior to and now in response to intervention.
One of the things that I'll, that I'll talk to, and Dr. Pescarella had mentioned it as well, the, the ninety-minute block of ELA time is not, very rarely is it sitting, you know, they, they might have small group instruction for a while, but then they're up and they're moving and doing activities around the process of learning to read in first grade or identifying, you know, developing their phonemic awareness or whatever it happens to be. So it's not, I, I, I don't, I hate for a picture to be presented that kids are sitting and being lectured to, because that's not what's happening, it's just that the content that's being offered during a particular block of time is focused on that. So that's, I, you know, I just don't want to give a bad picture that the, you know, our kids are sitting when they're in first grade, because they're not.
I understand, I just, the block scheduling is a concern, if that's how.
Thank you.
So, a question then, regarding the either committee, would, would scheduling fall under the, the purview of the committee in terms of looking at the scheduling, or would that be a separate issue that we would have to explore?
Scheduling.
Could that be part of this committee, or would it be a separate topic? Because if it is, we would then probably have to reform the committee to make it.
Scheduling typically is, is an administrative responsibility and prerogative, with input from teachers at times, which you can ask those questions about that preference, but typically, that's a managerial responsibility.
Okay. So I think our decision would be whether or not we would want citizens to sit on the committee, or we would just want citizens to be surveyed. Does anyone have any, does anyone want?
Well, I'd like some, I'd like some kind of input. I don't care if they're on the committee or if it's a survey, but I think that when you try to identify the target types of parents, I think you'd want some who have had their children in HAWK time over the course of the last three years, so you have some kind of a long-term. I think they can best assess, you know, what has been the long-term impact of, of HAWK time, good or bad, or, or whatever it is. Probably better than, you know, teaching staff, you tend to see a student here and somebody else sees them the next year. So if you could identify, so your sample group of, of parents, if they could be those parents who have had students in the program the last three years, I think that'd be great. And whether it's a survey or a, a member of the committee, I.
And the, and the, and the splitting up of the groups of students in HAWK time is homogeneous, so you would want parents who have students in all of the various groups.
Sure, yeah.
Correct.
So I personally like the board having, the district committee with parents of all, not that a survey wouldn't be adequate, but just for the inclusion, I think we all believe should have, and the district committee's a good step forward to show that we're inviting the parents to actually have a seat in the debate in the largest.
That's where, that's where I'm leaning to.
Yeah, I agree, I think, actually, I agree both should be occurring. You know, survey's definitely important, if you just take a look at my household, I have one kid, you know, the twins, one kid likes HAWK time, the other kid hates it, you know what I mean? So, and, and those type of, that type of feedback would come out through surveys, you know? What does the kid like about it, and what does the kid not like about it? So, and that would drive a lot of discussion on those committees.
And I agree, I think we should have surveys.
District, then? You're all, are you leaning towards the district committee?
I just think that you brought the third party, since Mrs. Ruhl put that on there. If she had any experience with having seen Pitt come in and do that kind of program evaluation, is there a better value for that, too? I know there's a cost, but someone who does this more thoroughly, more experienced doing this, because again, we're, we're looking at a timeframe here, we want to get this up and running and have a decision by next school year. Is there benefit, is it benefit of?
I don't know whether one from an organization like Pitt could have the information.
I think I, I would have to look further into their timeframe and what that would look like. From the discussion that I'm hearing, I'm confident that we would, you know, be able to move forward and give the board the information that they would need, including that analysis of a survey plus the input of parents on the committee, plus teachers on the committee, even an analysis of what our neighboring schools are doing, all of those kind of things that we would, that the third party would provide. The only thing that you, you gain with the third party is they're not directly embedded into the system, you know, they're just kind of an outside looking down through a, a higher location, but, you know.
And I like that component of it, you know, give us, give us the, the information we need to make our decision as quickly as possible. Because we're gonna get a committee, and there's no doubt, we, we probably, as a board, received some emails, spoke highly, and we've talked to other people that are not in favor of it.
Correct.
You know? And then maybe it'll do that same work, again, if we, I just think we explore looking into see with the third party, such as Dr. Ruhl mentioned with Pitt, see what kind of timeframe they could have for us.
I, I also like that. I, I do like the third-party approach, there's no bias.
Could we, could we request that they make sure they get parental input, the third?
Absolutely. They, they work, it's like you, you develop a contract of exactly what you want them to look at, what you want the report to come out as, what questions you want to look at, and, you know, they, they do what we ask them to do, but they do it from a more of a, a distance, not a personal input. What I would like to do, Mrs. Dobos, if you wouldn't mind, I, I can contact them tomorrow, see what their turnaround would be, and let you know that, and then from that decision, then you guys can decide what you want us to do, because if they say that they don't have, you know, they're not going to be able to get it done until sometime mid-August, then we probably want to go in a different direction.
Okay.
Great.
All right, that's what we'd like to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Personnel Committee, Mr. McGregor.
Just double-checking, there are seven items on Personnel Committee. Approval of EDRs, we have settlement agreement and release for non-professional employee, acceptance of resignations, change of assignment, appointment of personnel.
I'd like you to hold out, please, number seven.
Number seven, okay. That would be appointment to position. Anybody else? If nothing else, I move agenda items one through six.
Mr. McGregor's moved items one through six, seconded by Ms. Turner. All in favor? Oh, wait, is there any discussion? I forget that step. Just give me a little, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's passed nine to nothing. Nine to zero.
Okay, number seven, appointment to position, was asked to be held out by Ms. Dobos. We can discuss that at this point?
You can move it.
We can move seven now?
Uh-huh.
Okay. So seven is appointment to position, board of directors appoints Nicholas Spears to the position of Director of Facilities and Service, Services effective for a term of forty months. So I move that to be adopted.
Second.
Second, moved by Mr. McGregor and seconded by Mr. Spacusa. Any discussion about this? We have been looking for a person to fulfill Big Shoes, this for Mr. Keith, and we think we found the ideal person who will be joining our district very shortly. His name is Nicholas Spears, and he comes from West Jeff. So all in favor, could you please say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, I'd like to introduce Mr. Fierce, I'm saying the name right?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholas Spears to us all, if you'd like to stand up. This is our new Facilities Director, would you like to say aye?
I'm, I have a lot of voice. I'm just excited to get started. I've always admired the sister from afar, I grew up in those hills, I've always had just kind of that butt up against here, and it's just a place that feels that schooling and education is important, and I'm excited to be part of it.
We're excited to have you on board, thank you. Mr. Spacusa, Facilities and Services Committee.
Are we moving these two items tonight, or are we?
I'm gonna, how do we?
Move to table with two items, right?
If you're, if what you're interested in, go over them.
Okay.
And then if your motion is tabled, then we'll.
There are two, two items under Facility and Services this evening. The first item is awarding the bid of qualifications for Guaranteed Energy Savings Project, and item number two is the HVA C project at William Powell Elementary School.
Okay, so, does he have to move them first? Okay, so if the motion on the floor that you'd like to make is to have these tabled and not voted upon, then, then that's what you should do.
Okay.
Moving to table the two items that are under the Facilities and Services.
Yeah, I, I would like to move to table both item number one and item number two under Facility and Services this evening.
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved by Mr. Spacusa and seconded by Mr. Christensen to table these two items that are under Facilities and Services Committee. Any questions? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, those two items then have been tabled. Mr. Christensen, Finance.
So there are thirteen items on the Finance Committee agenda tonight, the February salaries and bills, the January financial report, the list of budgetary transfers, approval of student services contracts, the approval of the purchase of information services technology, approval of donations, a list of items declared unusable and unnecessary, an approval for the Kennedy School of Driving. I believe these are all since our committee meeting, these were added, a waiver of facility rental fees, purchase of pottery wheels, approval of tax settlement with ACG Pittsburgh and Macy's, acceptance of donation, and the purchase of varsity football uniforms. Would anybody like any of these held out? Or any questions on these?
Let's move it.
Okay. So then I move to adopt items one through thirteen on the Facilities Committee agenda, or Finance Committee agenda.
Second. The items have been moved by Mr. Christensen and seconded by Ms. Turner. Any discussion on any of these items? Is there, is there anyone in the audience here from the Football Boosters Association? We, we have a very generous donation that is put towards the purchase of the varsity uniform, and also we are going to be purchasing varsity uniforms, so we're very grateful that, for that donation. Any other questions? Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of items one through thirteen under Finance, please say aye.
Aye.
All, all those opposed, say nay. Motion's passed nine to nothing. Nine, zero. Ms. Turner, will you take Policy Committee, please?
As a policy revision, the final reading for eight oh five point one. I move for final reading. We need a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Turner and seconded by Mr. Nagel to accept the policy revision final reading. Any questions about it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay. Motion passes nine to zero. Other, Mrs. Ruhl, will you take other, please?
There are two items under other, board meetings and student agreements. I move that we adopt those.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Ruhl and seconded by Mr. Spacusa to adopt the board meetings for twenty twenty-one through January through December and the student agreements. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes nine, zero. At this time, we'll take public comments on any item of interest to the district, and I just ask that you please be respectful. Seeing none?
Jim Means, thirty-four eighty-five South Park Road. Seeing as it's his last official work week, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Keith and his upcoming re-
upcoming retirement, and thank him for years of service. I would also like to congratulate Dr. Pascarella on his appointment as the new superintendent of the Ambridge Area School District. These two men have saved the taxpayers of Bethel Park District millions of dollars over their tenure. Dr. Pascarella saved money through his sound fiscal management of the district. Mr. Keith saved money by making sure our roofs and windows didn't leak. He also ensured repairs and upgrades were done in an economical manner. I am concerned, however, since, since it became apparent that the group of seven that now controls the board would be in charge after the December reorganization, we've lost many good people. Officer Dixon resigned as school resource officer. Mr. Carrasi unexpectedly announced his retirement as a Director of Finance, Operation, and Human Resources. Mr. Keith unexpectedly announced his retirement as a Director of Facilities and Services. Dr. Pascarella resigned his post to take a position at the different school district. Lastly, minutes after being sworn in, Mrs. Turner announced she wanted to replace the solicitor. I hope this trend of losing critical people does not continue. Thank you.
Jason Turca, six-six-five Clifton Road. There's a presidential debate tonight as well, and at every presidential debate, they act like it is the most important election ever. And the issue I wanna talk about is something that I do feel is the most important issue, at least in my career. And that is, what do we want to be as a school district? Do, and in my opinion, we want two things. We want the best educational outcomes, and we want the most efficient way to spend the money that we have. I feel in the last four-plus years, we have only focused on number two, and we need to start focusing on a more balanced approach. In twenty-twelve, they reassessed Allegheny County, so in twenty-thirteen, all tax assessments were adjusted. Since that time, every single school district in the county has adjusted for inflation, which has been about ten percent. We have not, in fact, we've decreased. We are investing fourteen percent less this year than we did in twenty, twenty-thirteen, twenty-fourteen in our schools. We're the only school that has de- Last June, the PA Association of School Administrators Report reported every millage adjustment in every school district. This report was put out shortly before our June meeting. It would've been unthinkable for a school to reduce taxes, especially four-and-a-half million dollars, like was done here. Our fund balance is not an endowment, but it does earn interest. I recall a board member recently saying that it earned over one million dollars for a calendar year. That's seventy-six dollars per family that they do not have to pay in taxes. This, that, that vote was surprisingly the exact amount of the fund balance when last year's board voted to cut four-point-five million dollars in taxes. And now we have a deficit between five and six million dollars this year. Our scores, the lowest we'd ever gotten up till twenty-sixteen on the, the Pittsburgh Business Times School Rank, I know I'm going over, but if you can indulge me a minute, I'd appreciate it. Okay. We've never been lower than thirteenth. When I started, we were in the top ten. Our last three-year scores were sixteen, twenty-two, and seventeen. I have a few questions for you nine board members. If you support, if you do not support the referendum, I wanna know, do you support over six million dollars in deficit spending next year? Do you support eliminating all of our unassigned and dedicated savings over the next few years, which would raise taxes seventy-six per household? And are you okay with our falling educational rankings? I hope all nine of you agree to support this referendum as much as you can. Thank you all for your time.
Sharon Jansik, four-three-one-four Anna Street. I want to say that I appreciate the board being interested in what parents and community members think, and thank you for asking to include us on those committees, or at least get survey responses from us. I appreciate that greatly. That's something that I've been working towards for many years, so, thank you. I do wanna say that I personally like Hawk Time and the idea of Hawk Time, and I've always thought that it was a great idea. And actually, that was kind of reinforced when I was at Mount Lebanon one day and saw their Lebo time, which is kinda the same thing, really.
Is it exactly the same way? Is it run the same exact way?
Generally, it's an extension of that lesson.
Are there specials different, how they set them up?
That's block scheduling, which is a whole 'nother thing, like you mentioned, two things at once. But I do like that we need to make sure we find ways to extend students who need an extension, whether or not they're identified, and support students who need additional support and intervention, whether or not they're identified, and all of the students in the middle. And I think the, the places where I have found people not liking Hawk Time, which at times I haven't, has generally been because of what they were doing in the time. A lot, if you're doing a lot of worksheets and a lot of PSSA prep types of things, the students tend to not really appreciate that. But the time itself, I value. And I have every confidence that you all, working together, can move forward and set a vision and a direction for us, and I have confidence that you will find the correct people to help you do that. Thank you very much.
I only made it two months. I said I didn't wanna come back.
Name and address, please.
My name is Gus Oakley. You know me and my address, Street twenty-nine Allen Dale. What I have to talk to tonight is not good. You take, this isn't transparent with the student agreements. You took a suspension, made it into an expulsion. You're gonna ruin a ninth grader's life. Some of you, I thought, were my friends. You are no longer my friends. I will never attend another board meeting as long as you people are here. You, you were supposed to be the nice people. Only five of you went to the hearing. I hope the public finds out who didn't go. Jim, you're looking a little better tonight.
Any other public comments?
Ron Workmeister, forty-seven fifty Robert Drive. First, let me just add a statement since I heard something here. We still spend more money per student than Upper St. Clair or Peters, okay? Even after our finance officer, Mr. Carrasi, obliged some board members' requests to keep reworking the budget in a different fashion, the same outcome was being conveyed back to that board member. Furthermore, I believe that Mr. Carrasi has speculated that we should be close to the same budget as last year, once all this is finalized and that, with the same basic unexpected expenditures we incur every year. If this plays out like he insinuates, then we should, we would only need to tap the reserve funds for a little bit. This would not be too surprising, since the previous four years, we had millions of dollars of surpluses with zero percent tax increases and a growing fund balance every year. And I hope that Bethel Park citizens are well aware of a very sad transformation of our administration right before our very eyes. Last year, we had some board members badgering some of the excellent administrators for paraprofessional staffing details, building plan details, et cetera, you know, that we felt, that I felt at least, that was unwarranted, and, which was bringing our board down to a micromanaging and making it very unproductive for administrators to function, trying to always meet these requests. I saw firsthand the growing tension among these administrators, their displeasure and dismay for the requests. Proof now is that we are prematurely losing a lot of excellent administrators to retirements or leaving. I know that they had indicated that they would be, have been here longer, but now the writing's on the wall. Due to the time constraints, let me just say that by losing Mr. Carrasi, Buzzy, who has worn many hats in the past four years I've been on the board, Mr. Bill Keith, our Head of Facilities, Joe L. Dixon, our School of Security, and the replacing of Tricia Andrews, our School Solicitor, all are of a devastating loss to our fine Bethel Park School District. They all have saved us thousands, millions of dollars. And our biggest loss is our excellent, irreplaceable Superintendent, Dr. Joe Pascarella. With his leadership, we have excelled in all areas, while at the same time, he has saved our district literally millions of dollars. There are seven board members who had left Joe with no alternative but to leave. I know he was gonna stay here. I will need another two minutes to cover his accomplishments at a later date. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay, at this time, we'll take board comments. Starting with Mr. McGregor.
I think opening up the, the discussion for Hawk Time is, is a, is a good thing. It's not about removing it. In fact, maybe even developing a, a better system of identifying students earlier and more effectively, that can always be a, a good thing. So, I, I look forward to this, this committee going over the informations and, and coming up with some recommendations that are, that are solid.
So, I agree with everything he said, so I'm gonna skip that part. I'd like to say, I wish you a happy retirement and safe travels, and welcome to you, Mr. Fierce. I really do like the discussions and the, the engagement and the idea of parent involvement, something I've been pushing for, and I'm glad that we're seeing the work that's reaching up to that now. And, you know, all of the achievements and stuff in the Good News Report. Our staff, our students, everybody thought much, really appreciate it, and keep fighting forward.
Yeah, I think we need to keep moving forward. I agree. Good luck, Mr. Keith. You're welcome. And hopefully, everybody can have a good evening.
I just wanna report that I completed my third annual DECA chaperoning trip last week, and I gotta say, that, that organization is really impressive. The public speaking skills, the business planning skills that it develops, you know, the, the students are, you know, they're put on the spot to present, and that's a, that's a tough task, but I, you know, saw a number of them practice, okay, and critique them, and I thought they were really, really good in terms of their, their whole preparation around the plan, their support materials that they developed in terms of, you know, to support their presentation, and, and their speaking skills is really good. It's a, you know, that, that's a club that I, I believe just teaches tremendous, tremendous life skills that, that students will need throughout college, as, as well as the rest of their life.
I'm gonna interrupt real quick. This halftime score, the Bethel Park Girls' Basketball Game is twenty-one, sixteen, Bethel Park. Halftime? Halftime.
I would just like to say that the district had a program for dyslexia, and for people, we didn't get as large a turnout as we would've liked to have had, but if you have never had the experience of going through the challenges that these students go through, you really should take an opportunity to experiment with that. It's just very sad. I mean, you can't imagine how they are looking at their reading and their numbers and how differently they see them than we do. And we have a lot of students in this district that have that, and some have not been identified yet. And I think that it's a, a very learning experience. I think we need to have more people find out about it, and I think we need to identify our students earlier. It makes a world of difference. Even some colleges now are offering support for dyslexic students that have gone all their life and only found out in high school that they had it. So it is very real, and if you have an opportunity and it's presented again, I certainly hope that you go, because your child could be experiencing reading difficulties or math difficulties, and that could be a challenge they're experiencing, but just haven't been identified. And you need to follow through with it. That's all. It's a great, great work, work job.
Mr. Keith, I think I told you this before, but just in your near, near future, you're gonna have the six Saturdays and a Sunday schedule. Good for you. Congratulations, and thank you very much for what you have done for us. And Nicholas, thank you for coming on board. Comment on participation, I think it's a wonderful thing. And many years ago, before I became a board member, we had a thing called the Citizens' Curriculum Committee that was very active, very involved, until we were told that we had to basically disband because of a union issue, which I truly never understood. I saw the letter from Mike Latusick that told us why we couldn't participate. I wish I could remember it, but I can't. So I, I, it's great that we do that. I think it's very important for all stakeholders to be involved in decision-making and, or at least input, maybe, you know, decision still falls back upon us, but they should have input. And I'd like to thank Mrs. O'Rourke for the Wellness Program, the collaboration. I was really, I was there Sunday evening, myself and about six other people, unfortunately. I think we almost had as many people as the speakers that were there. And it was a really, it was a really, a, a good presentation, something that was really valuable, and I'm, I'm sorry that most of the community didn't get to hear it. But there are still many opportunities left in the week. So, talk to the vendors. I, I went and talked to every vendor that was there that night and thanked them for participating, and they have a lot to offer. The speakers have a lot to offer, so please, if you have the opportunity, show up, try it too. I mean, there's a great opportunity to try the programs with the community center, so don't give up yet. We got four, three more days. I'm done. Thank you.
I'm just gonna piggyback off of Mr. McGregor. I'm looking forward to Hawk Time discussions. I have three little ones about to enter the system, so this topic is near and dear to me. I'm gonna continue to educate myself on Hawk Time and ask many questions, see what my kids are gonna be going through as they get ready to enter in. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Bill and I worked together for many years. You'd be a true asset we're gonna miss. Welcome aboard, Nick. Lot of good things going on here, but as you'll see here tonight, and it'll go on these next months, we have a lot of changes coming in Bethel Park School District. We're gonna try to, our goal is to move everything forward, and we need everyone's participation and their opinion, so please, don't get in the crowd, come up, voice your opinion, let us know what you're thinking so we can make the best decisions and get this district moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you all for your participation, and thank you to the board members for a really good discussion tonight, I think. Kinda shows how we want to involve everybody in the transparency. I'm personally looking forward to our future. Change is hard, but it also can be very exciting. So, I'd like to wish you well, Mr. Keith, and happy travels, and welcome aboard, Mr. Fierce, and good luck to you, Dr. Pascarella, in your future. You have a great new opportunity, and I think that it'll, it'll be good, it'll be good for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Like to have a motion for adjournment?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.